Okay Chair, we're now live.
Thank you. Good afternoon everyone and welcome to this remote meeting of the Outer East Community Committee. My name is Councilor Pauline Graham and I will be chairing today's meeting. The Outer East Community Committee covers Crossgates and Winmore, Kipaks and Methley, Temple Newsom and Gartham and Swillington Wards and is a committee where ward councillors have an opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for the local area and also consider funding applications regarding local community projects and youth activities. I would like to start the meeting today by confirming that today's Community Committee meets the requirements of the council's constitution even though members are in remote attendance and that members of the public are able to view the meeting via the live webcasting. As we begin the meeting, could I ask all attendees to mute their microphone unless I invite them to speak? This will avoid disruption from background noise. Should a member wish to speak or ask questions, please use the raise hand facility to attract my attention. We're now going to move on to appointments of Vice Chair. In order to avoid any disruption to the meeting should I lose internet connectivity, I propose we appoint a Vice Chair who could step in during my absence. I move councillor Harland and invite another member to second that motion, please. Let somebody second councillor Harland.
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Lewis and everybody else who raised their hands. I'll take a vote by assuming our silence as approval. Are we all happy with councillor Harland to act as Vice Chair if need be? And are you happy with that silence?
Yes, that's fine. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Harland, are you happy to stand in if need be please?
Yes Chair.
Thank you. So could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you've introduced yourself? I'll start with councillor Peter Gruen.
Councillor Peter Gruen from Crossgates and Winmore Ward. Good afternoon everybody.
Thank you. Councillor Jess Lennox. You're muted. You're muted councillor Lennox. You're muted. Right councillor Lennox is there, we can all see her. Must be... No, okay. No, we can't. Okay then. Thank you, we still can't. Councillor Mary Harland.
Good afternoon councillor Mary Harland, Kipaks and Methley Ward.
Councillor James Lewis.
Hello, good afternoon councillor James Lewis, also Kipaks and Methley Ward.
Councillor Marella Midgley.
Good afternoon councillor Marella Midgley from the Kipaks and Methley Ward.
Councillor Deborah Cooper.
Good afternoon everybody councillor Deborah Cooper, Temple Newsom Ward.
Councillor Helen Hayden.
Good afternoon councillor Helen Hayden, also Temple Newsom Ward.
Councillor Nicole Sharp.
Good afternoon councillor Nicole Sharp, Temple Newsom Ward.
Councillor Mark Dobson.
Good afternoon everybody councillor Mark Dobson, Gartham and Swillington Ward.
Councillor Sarah Field. I've seen her. I've seen her, I'm sure I have.
She appears to have dropped off the call Chair.
Okay, and with apologies for councillor McCormack, is that correct? Yeah. Okay, we'll now move on to officers. Helen Mallinson's given apologies. Dieter, Dieter Trent-Humphries.
Hi everyone, Dieter Trent-Humphries, Advanced Practitioner for Crossgates and Winmore Ward and Temple Newsom Ward.
Thank you. Apologies if I don't pronounce this correctly. Piers Donoghue Fuller.
Good afternoon everyone, thanks very much Chair, that is correct. My name's Piers, I'm the Housing Manager for the Gartham and Kipaks area, thank you very much.
Well let's hope everything else goes as correct then, thank you. Adele Britton, with apologies for Adele I believe. Denise Kempton.
Hi everyone Denise Kempton, Youth Service for Gartham and Swillington Ward and Kipaks and Methley Ward.
Thank you. Craig Williams.
We don't appear to have Craig on the call Chair.
Thank you. Richard Cracknell.
Chair Richard Cracknell from the Voice Influence and Change Team in Children and Families Directorate.
Thank you. Chris Nenadict.
Good afternoon Chair, Chris Nenadict. I don't have a camera on my desktop, I feel very left out so I will try and make different arrangements for next time. Chris Nenadict, Parks and Countryside, I'm the Operations Manager.
Thank you. Bali Birdie.
Good afternoon, it's Bali, I'm from the Senior Localities Officer in the Communities Team.
Thank you. And I believe we've got Heather. Has Heather arrived?
Evening Chair, it's Heather Ashby from the Antisocial Behaviour Team, Team Supervisor, Lasbert South.
Thank you. And lastly Andy Booth.
Good afternoon Andy Booth and I'll be the Clerk to the Community Committee.
Thank you. So we're now moving on to the agenda, item one.
Sorry Chair, can I just point out that you've got Jo from Crossgates Good Neighbours here as well.
Oh sorry Jo, because you're not on the... Cracking, we've been speaking earlier as well, haven't we? Thank you for that councillor Cooper.
Good afternoon everybody, it's Jo Horstfall from Crossgates and District Good Neighbours scheme, thank you.
Sorry about that Jo.
Don't worry.
Okay then, Andy.
Right, thank you Chair, just to run you through the procedural items on the agenda. Under item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under item number two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the present public. Under item number three, there are no late items of business. Under agenda item number four, could I ask members if they have any disclosable pecuniary interest to declare?
No.
No, that's a no, move on. Number five, apologies for absence, we've got apologies from councillor McCormack. Just want to swap the next agenda items round, the difference to what we've got on the agenda, so if we take the open forum next rather than the minutes Chair. Just to mention that the open forum's been handled slightly different while we're meeting remotely and written submissions have been asked for. We've got a submission today from Brandon Jones of First Bus and his submission goes as follows. First Bus are proud to have introduced the first electric bus route in West Yorkshire on Route 5 which serves Holton Moor. Antisocial behaviour in Holton Moor by a minority of people has threatened the safety of passengers and staff and these incidents have led to several journeys being diverted, meaning at certain times that the community has lost its important connection. First Bus are working with the police to try and identify the culprits, but what other actions can or have been done to reduce antisocial behaviour so that people are safe and bus routes are not diverted.
Okay. Would anybody like to comment on this submission? Councillor Cooper.
Yeah, thanks Chair and I was unaware that this submission had been brought to the Community Committee, I've got to say, so this is the first that I've heard about it. So as you would imagine, there's been a number of incidents on Holton Moor regarding antisocial behaviour that we as councillors, Lee City Council, West Yorkshire Police and a number of other organisations and agencies have come together to form a partnership to look at what's been happening there and to try and intervene in ways that we can be supportive to change some of that behaviour. I don't think I would say much more than that at this open forum, but Andy please would you note down that I'd be more than happy to speak to First Bus about it as one of the elected representatives and I'm sure my other colleagues, councillor Sharp and councillor Hayden would also. And we have not had an email from First Bus about it, this is the first we've heard about this submission. So we're happy to take and deal with it outside of this arena Chair.
Thank you councillor Cooper and it did come in very late, this submission didn't set, so it's not something that we've had. I only found out about it not very long ago. Are we all okay with that then? So thank you councillor Cooper for taking that one on. Andy?
Right, thank you Chair. There was another submission which the Chair wishes to acknowledge that's regarding Bolling Green Provision across the city, as this was a citywide issue, it's just to report that this is going to be fed into the citywide consultation process and that's it for the submissions today Chair. So we're on to the agenda now from the minutes.
Okay, that closes the open forum. So item seven, minutes of the previous meeting, for those who are in attendance, we're happy with the minutes?
A little bit there.
Thank you. Okay then. Any comments from the minutes? No, thank you. I think I've lost item seven on my papers, Bali.
Sorry Chair, I think I've just missed, informed you with the number in there. So once we've done the minutes, we're on to the finance report which will be agenda item number eight.
Oh, thank you. Right, so Bali would you like to introduce agenda item eight please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Good afternoon everyone, I will take this report read by members. Before I discuss the finance report, I would like to provide a summary. The report provides the Community Committee with an update on the budget position for the Wellbeing Fund, Youth Activity Fund, capital budget as well as the Community Infrastructure Levy Budget for 2020/21. It also provides the Committee with an update on organisations funded by the Community Committee and how their project delivery will be affected by the coronavirus pandemic. The report also provides the Community Committee with an update on the projects that have been funded through the £10,000 set aside by the Committee from their available wellbeing budget 2020/21 across all wards to tackle the effects of the coronavirus pandemic. Could all members turn to page 15, point 20 please? The Community Committee is asked to note that so far a total of £51,529.13 has been allocated to projects. Point 21, the Community Committee is also to note that there is a remaining balance of £36,786.37 in the Wellbeing Revenue Fund. Turning over to page 16, table one, there's a ward breakdown. Crossgates and Winmore, the available balance in their ward is £9,538.49. Gartham and Swillington, £10,613.46. Kipaks and Methley, £8,506.61. Temple Newsom have a remaining balance of £8,127.81. Moving on to page 17, point 23, these are projects for consideration and approval. So point 23, members are asked to consider the following projects against the 2020 and 21 wellbeing allocation. The project title is Outdoor Equipment, name of the group is based at Micklefield Scouts. The total project cost is £3,000. The amount requested from the wellbeing for 2021 budget is £300 and the wards covered are Kipaks and Methley. So due to the coronavirus, the scouts have not been able to meet face to face and the organisation would like to purchase more outdoor equipment so sessions can be carried out. Do all members agree?
Do we all agree or any comments? No, we're all okay with that?
Hello Chair.
Sorry councillor Lewis.
Hello Chair, just very quickly, we agree with it and just to make the Committee aware, I know they've sourced the rest of the funding from other sources as well, so our £300 is obviously very welcome to them and they have been able to resource the full cost of the project.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Lewis. Okay Bali.
Thank you Chair. Moving on to point 24, project title's Christmas Packs for Vulnerable Families, the name of the group is Meadowfield, Temple Newsom and Colton Children's Centre. The total project cost is £560 and the amount requested from the Youth Activity Fund for 2021 budget is £560. The wards covered are Temple Newsom. The Children's Centre are working as part of the wider project across the Outer East area to reach as many vulnerable families as possible. Do members agree?
Are we all okay with that? Thank you Bali.
Thank you Chair. Point 25, project title is Christmas Packs for Vulnerable Families. The name of the group is Temple Newsom Community Partnership. Total project cost is £630 and the amount requested from the Youth Activity Fund for 2021 is £630. The ward covered is Temple Newsom. Do all members agree?
We're all okay? Thank you Bali.
Thank you Chair. Turning over to point 26, project title Christmas Boxes for Vulnerable Families, the name of the organisation is Brickshaw Cluster. Total project cost is £250. The amount requested from the Youth Activity Fund 2021 budget is £250. Wards covered are Kipaks and Methley. Do all members agree?
Okay, thank you Bali.
Thank you Chair. Point 27, I've provided a list of projects since the last Community Committee on the 10th of March that have been approved by DDN. Thank you. Moving on to page 20, point 28, list of decline projects since the last Community Committee on the 10th of March. Point 21, sorry page 21, point 29.
Can I just go back, is everybody happy with the decline, everything on the information we've just had there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Page 21, point 29, the Youth Activities Fund position. The total available to spend for the Outer East Community Committee 2021 including carry forward from the previous year was £70,810.20. The Community Committee is asked to note that so far a total of £46,069.62 has been allocated to projects listed in the table two. The Community Committee is also asked to note that there is a remaining balance of £24,740 in the Youth Activity Fund. The amount available across the wards for Crossgates and Winmore is £2,287.8. Gartham and Swillington, £4,525.38. Kipaks and Methley, £17,258.7. And Temple Newsom, £670.5.
Are you okay with that? Thank you Bali.
Thank you Chair. Turning over to page 22, Small Grants Budget for 2020/21. The remaining balance for small grants is £3,661.35 detailed in table three. Point 34, Skipps Budget, the remaining balance is £1,622.70 detailed in table four.
Okay, thank you Bali.
Thank you Chair. Moving on to page 23, point 35, Position Statement on Organisations and Projects Affected by the Coronavirus Pandemic. The table provides the Community Committee with a position statement on projects funded by the Committee that are currently running or on hold and how they've been affected by the coronavirus pandemic. The Committee is asked to note the contents of the table and make recommendations. So the first project is the Fab Project which is the Youth Community Group, which is a small grant and that project is on hold. All members agreement to keep that on hold at the moment until the situation changes.
Were you all happy with that? Okay.
Thank you Chair. Youth Summit, that will be delivered next year and we're talking about that later on in the update report that I've got coming soon. VABJ Commemorations, that's on hold. A member still wanting to keep that project on hold?
I think so. Are we all happy to keep that on hold? Yes, yes Bali, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Period Poverty, this will be delivered when community hubs are reopened. I know some are in the process of being delivered at the moment. A member's okay, happy with that to still continue?
Yes.
Thank you Chair. Outer East Activity Programme, this is on hold. It's been unable to be delivered at the moment due to the current situation. A member's still happy to keep that on hold?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you Chair. Aircamps, that's not going ahead. Members happy from the Gartham and Swillington Ward and Temple Newsom to return, sorry from just the Gartham and Swillington Ward to return that money back to the pot?
If Gartham and Swillington, if that's what they want to do. Are we all okay with that? Yep, okay Bali.
Thank you Chair. Dance Fever, that's not going ahead. A Temple Newsom Ward member's happy to return that to the pot.
Yeah, it's a real shame, but yeah, I'm happy to return it to the pot.
Thank you councillor. Found Fiction, that's on hold at the moment, that's not been able to be delivered. A member's happy to keep that on hold at the moment?
Yes.
Thank you Chair. Turning over to page 24, point 36, Capital Budget. The Outer East Community Committee has a capital budget of £89,274 available to spend. The ward breakdown for this is Crossgates and Winmore have got £21,216.75. Gartham and Swillington, £18,414.76. Kipaks and Methley, £24,038.75. Temple Newsom, £25,603.74.
We all okay with those figures? Thank you Bali.
Thank you Chair. Point 37, the Community Infrastructure Levy Budget 2020/21. The Community Committee is asked to note there is now a balance of £205,697.35 total available. The ward breakdown for this is Crossgates and Winmore, £51,167.69. Gartham and Swillington, £135.174.88. Kipaks and Methley, £696.56. And Temple Newsom, £18,658.22.
Can I just ask that those figures are read out correctly please? It's £135,074.88 for Gartham and Swillington, not £135.
Apologies councillor Cooper.
Just wanted to get it right.
Thank you.
Okay Bali.
Moving on to page 25, point 38, Additional Considerations and Result of Coronavirus Pandemic. In the light of the current coronavirus pandemic, the Community Committee is invited to discuss any specific considerations they would like to recommend for approval and whether they would like to commit any further funding to support the local volunteering efforts in their own communities. The table shows the allocation of the £10,000 Covid-19 discretionary fund and the amount remaining, balance remaining for Crossgates and Winmore is £4,000. Gartham and Swillington, £6,000. Kipaks and Methley, £2,450. And Temple Newsom, £4,000.
And I think, shall I add to this here councillor Cooper regarding your recent email of the ring fencing? This is excellent news that councillor Cooper, this is their Community Committee Chairs, at the start of the pandemic I agreed to ring fence up to 10k per ward from your 2021 wellbeing budget, sorry, to support the delivery of local activities to help those in greatest need as a result of the Covid-19 virus. A simple and flexible approach was applied by my officers to ensure that the money was directed by members quickly to where it was needed. I know this was welcomed by you at the time. Since that time, Committees have supported over 150 local projects to bring much needed support to local residents. I am now writing to you to inform you that an additional 330k of funding on the Covid-19 Tier Three Fund has been secured for wellbeing purposes. So there's more, there's more in more detail which I'm sure we'll pass around, shall we councillor Cooper, to members? But that's excellent news, thank you. And I'm sure that everybody will be really pleased to know that there's the extra 10k coming in as well. Okay Bali.
Thank you Chair. Sorry Chair, can I just say that there will be a letter going to all members of council to inform of that, that will be coming out this week. I just wanted to ensure that Community Committee Chairs were first of all informed because obviously they'll be having to work with the finances around that and that every ward will get a further £10,000 to use for Covid-related, pandemic-related activities or spend in your ward. So hopefully you'll find that useful.
Thank you councillor Cooper, that really is good news. Okay Bali.
Thank you Chair. Turning to page 27, point 47, Recommendations. Members are asked to consider approved points A to J and that concludes my finance report councillor, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody, any questions or comments to Bali on that? No? Okay, thank you. And now I'm going to ask Chris Nenadict, I'm going to bring him forward to give his update on the environment, please Chris.
Thank you councillor, thank you Chair. Good afternoon everybody. A quick update on parks in general, then we'll go through one or two projects that we're involved with in each of your wards. Right now we're adapting our parks in response to Covid-19, have been throughout the pandemic. Our parks have remained open throughout, government guidance came in in July about the safer spaces guidance, more signage, more information to people about how to keep safe. We've looked at all of our parks, we're implementing those measures right now. Some members may see more signage in some of their parks than they've seen before. Tier Three to go from the lockdown last week, so for four weeks we couldn't have our skate parks, our multi-use games areas, our BMX tracks open, our outdoor gyms to be closed, but no football, no grassroots football and rugby. That's all now reopened again which is great. We're experiencing greatly increased visitor numbers in our parks which is fantastic. Parks are one of a few places where people can still meet in Tier Three areas. So that is brilliant, see parks full of people. It comes at a cost of course, we have more litter, we have more bins to empty, but right now I think if the weather's good our parks are full which is absolutely, absolutely brilliant. A couple of issues about, a couple of things to mention about some of the projects we've talked about before at environmental subgroups which I'm sure has been reported back to Community Committee, some of the bigger projects we're working on. The Play Barn at Temple Newsom, the City Park which sits within East Outer. We continue to work with NPS, the council strategic design partner, at planning that. It's an indoor playground, it sits within the farm, it will have a cafe, it will have a visitor centre and a shop. I think importantly, it is a play area for children of all abilities. Members will I'm sure remember that the playground in Temple Newsom is the only fully inclusive playground in the city, was the first one in the city. We worked with FISCAP to put that together and we're building play within the Play Barn for children of all abilities. It'll have changing places toilet which is really important. We're at Reva Stage Three, moving to Reva Stage Four. We're looking at what funding can be found from alternative sources. We've got 780 grand we think which Salix funding will pay for because it's going to be an energy efficient building. Watch this space on that, the golf course configuration, members will be aware, there was a lot of consultation about the future of Temple Newsom Golf. We have reconfigured or just about reconfigured 27 holes down to 18. It is planned to include a road safety cycle park and a playground and one or two other issues and one or two other items in there, I'm sure it will be a great benefit to the Outer East. We've continued working throughout the Covid year with members and continue to have grades for from members throughout Outer East in Gartham and Swillington, working with members like Nylands Lane and White House Lane, Picnic Site and Hollinghurst Woods. In Crossgate and Window, improving access to Pender's Way and working with the newly reformed Friends of Chippies Pond, which is interesting. At Temple Newsom, I'll just mention one or two things in Temple Newsom Ward, but we've completed work on access controls on Broadway and Holton Moor Playground. I know members are really supportive of this, is in for planning permission as we speak, hoping subject to planning to have a start on site early next year, which will be, which will be good for the, for the community in Kipaks and Methley. Working at Kipaks Meadows, almost complete now, working with members of the parish council about an approach, a strategic approach to funding in green space across Kipaks in general and similar discussions in Elland Bywater. And similar discussions in Elton Bywater about the miners welfare ground around sport, around play. And maybe a green gym. And I think we work very well with the parish council and with the with the ward councillors overall of, all of East Outer. It was touched upon by Andy Booth earlier on, the Bowles consultation for colleagues and for members and for any of the public that are listening. The consultation closes later this week and it's important that stakeholders have a chance of their say. So you've got two days I think to get your say in on that. Just to touch on on tree planting, members will be aware. At the last meeting I spoke about our aspirations to plant 5.8 million trees across the city. And the seed gathering that we're going to do with schools, 220,000 trees are going to be planted this year alone across Leeds. The seed gathering is complete. We've got more Conkers and Acorns that we know what to do with. And their Uffertour Nursery now being planted and will be, will be grown into little trees that we'll plant out in two or three years' time. Members have been consulted on each of the proposals in their wards. And where we've been asked to do, we've made changes to planting proposals because we have said throughout and it was, it was agreed at executive board that the final say as to where trees are planted sits with ward councillors, which is absolutely right. We've had a small number of complaints, I think it's fair to say. One, I'm not saying they're all not in my backyard planting, but there are one or two people who have not quite got it yet. And we've made some modifications as a result of that. We've had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people coming forward and volunteering to help us plant, to plant trees across the city, which is, which is, which is fantastic. And I've got to say, we've had great support from, from members in all four of the wards. I think this year, last year we were all listening to Greta Thunberg telling us about our houses on fire and the real story about the climate emergency in the council. All parties agreed that we needed to plant 5.8 million trees and that's great. I think this year, the message has been Covid related and it's certainly taken the front seat in all the discussions we are having, but I think certainly for the next 12 months until the next tree planting season starts. Tree planting has just started by the way in across wards. We need to get that climate emergency message back up at the top of our agenda and particularly the story, the work that the council is doing. Not just what we're doing, what the council is doing in general, I think is phenomenal. And as I speak to colleagues around the country. You know, there are many people that look at Leeds and think, well actually they're doing, you know, a cracking job. That's my, that's my update councillor. I'm here as always for questions. And if members want to ask me questions now or later on, I'd be happy to answer them. So I'm here for as long as you like, casual mute.
Thank you Chris. And once again for an excellent report. And pleased to hear that the tree planting's moving on. And just remember in a no-go area, the football pitch in Manston Park. Okay.
I think two or three trees in front of one of the goals.
No. Anybody any questions or comments to Chris? No, well thank you. Would you thank your team as well for the excellent work you're doing? Oh Helen councillor Hayden.
Sorry, I was just waving by to Chris, but.
Okay.
That's very, that's very kind of you councillor, but I can't see your hand.
It was really good to hear the report.
You're waving or do you want to speak?
Me.
Councillor Lennox, yes.
Yes, sorry. Thank you Chris for that report. And I was just wondering, I've popped an email. It's really good to see that the planting is getting started. I was wondering whether you know if, because apparently some has started on Pender's Way already. I was wondering if you know if that's continuing or if there's another date booked in for that or if that's all done now. Because I'm just hoping that we can hopefully come down and partake and show support for the planting that's happening.
Thank you councillor Lennox. No, the answer is I don't know. The answer to that, we've 80 odd sites and I don't know the answer to all them, but I have, I've seen your email, I've forwarded it to Vicky Marsden for her, because I know you said in it, and so hopefully she will have answered by the time she goes today.
Fab, thank you.
If you can share us that up Chris for us please.
Yeah, will do.
Okay then, thank you. Anybody else, any comments to Chris? No? No, forgotten. Councillor Cooper to everyone, yes it's March due to it coming from Tier Three Fund.
Sorry Chair, I was just answering some questions that had come through on the chat line.
Alright, okay, thank you. Okay then. Bally, next item please then.
Thank you Chair. Could all members turn to page 29? This is a community committee area update report and I will take this as being read by members. This report is to bring members' attention on the update of the work which the community's team is engaged in based on priorities identified by the community committee. It also provides opportunities for further questioning or to request a more detailed report on a particular issue. This report provides regular updates on some of the key activities between community committee meetings and functions dedicated to the community committees. Community champion roles, community engagement, partnership and locality working. I'll turn to point, sorry Chair.
Just to say. Which point are you going to turn to, did you say?
Page 29.3 Chair.
Right, so councillor Hayden, would you like to make any comment on that?
Just that I'm really grateful for all the hard work from the whole team to deliver Christmas boxes to our young people and vulnerable families across the Outer East. This Christmas is going to be particularly hard for our, this year has been very hard for a lot of people. So just want to particularly thank Bally for all the work that she's done in bringing this all together. But also Gemma in Temple, Gemma and Claire in Temple Newsam, Sharon in Garth and Maria in Brigshaw Cluster in Kipax and Methley. And Dieter and Denise are brilliant youth service advanced practitioners to that they're going to be delivering fantastic Christmas packs to our young people across the Outer East in all four wards. So that was, you know, with the lockdown and everything, it went very uncertain and so I'm really grateful to members tonight for agreeing the funding. And as, as Gemma in Temple Newsam said, and Temple Newsam cluster said, there's going to be a lot of happy children who wouldn't have been as happy if they weren't getting the Christmas boxes as well. Also the great work done on the, so far on the youth summit. And thanks to councillor Graham for joining us to discuss that. We're going to be a bit different to the other areas, but in fact actually the inner west possibly, where Bramley is, when councillor Caroline Gruen. She's adopted our idea of involving, they're involving schools, but we're just involving young people that our youth service work with. Although it will be, schools, children in all schools have the opportunity to go online. And we've always done this in the Outer East since setting up the youth summit. So many thanks to councillor Cooper for, you know, giving us the leeway to kind of, you know, bear away from from the, the main kind of template for it being online Zoom summit. So it will be different and I'm very much looking forward to that at the end of January and hearing what the young people have to say to us. And that's really exciting. Also just an update on the KICKS programme in, in Holton Moor. They've been mentoring and carrying on as best they can throughout the year. They had to shut down the sessions in November, but they're back up and running on a Friday evening. And I know that they get great support from the youth service and from Dieter and the team and from the police as well. So they're back up and running and they're running a sports camp, but it will only be for children who can, who actually attend metafield school because they don't want to burst any bubbles, any Covid secure bubble. So that's a pity, but those children will get access and they are, you know, and because they use metafields mugger anyway, so that's going ahead. So big thanks to them as well for keeping going in these strange times. Many thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Hayden, and there's been very productive meetings, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for chairing the last one when I couldn't, so appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, now we've got environment and community, sorry, anybody any other comments on that?
Councillor Graham, could I just?
Dieter, yes.
Could I just add something to this?
Just make Bally, we've got Dieter wants to come in. Dieter, unmute.
Yeah, just to let everyone know, the KICKS programme is back running five nights a week now, Monday to Friday. 5.30 to 6.30 for the younger end, age 13s. And 6.30 to 8.30 from 14 to 18 year olds. Obviously we're still supporting that and we'll be down there on Friday evening.
Thank you Dieter. Sorry Bally, what did you want to come in?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to add to councillor Hayden's youth summit update. The date for the Outer East Youth Summit is being agreed for Tuesday, the 26th of January. And we do have Richard Cracknell from the Boyson Influence Team to talk through the plans for Outer East.
Very good. Okay then. So we'll move on to the next one, environment and community.
Can I just, sorry Chair, can I just come in? I have my hand up, but I don't think you can see me.
When it disappears, it's supposed to keep up, I think.
Sorry, sorry Chair, I know all this technology is, you know, I think the, the saying of the year will be unmute yourself, won't it? But yeah, sorry, I just wanted to, I was just gonna say what Dieter said about the the KICKS programme and the times that it were running, but thanks Dieter for pointing that out. Also, I want to pay huge respect to councillor Hayden for undertaking this Christmas box idea that she had and brought it to absolute fruition. So, you know, from us in Temple Newsam and I'm sure from the other wards that are benefiting from it. Would really like to thank you councillor Hayden for all that work that you did. You know, during the autumn leading up to this, thank you very much. I'm sure the young people, when they receive these boxes, will really appreciate it.
Thank you councillor. Okay councillor Hayden. Okay, Bally, we move.
Chair, I think we've got Richard Cracknell that would like to provide an update. He's from the Boyson Influence Team.
Oh please, yes.
Thank you Chair.
I can't see you.
Thank you Chair, thank you Bally. Can you see me okay Chair?
Oh I can now, you're sorry.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I've just come along this afternoon just to give a very quick update on the plans for your youth summit. Councillor Hayden and Bally have covered a lot of it, but just to let everyone know, it's going to be on the 26th of January. Been working with Dieter and Denise and other colleagues in the youth service. We're aiming to encourage young people in your areas to take part after school. Some localities have gone through the schools route. I actually think the route you're taking is perhaps more inclusive. We can reach out to more young people. But we're not going to forget all the students in your wards because what we've designed and produced is an online survey that we're going to share with colleagues in schools to encourage all their learners to take part. So we can still get their views on what direction they want our youth activity fund to go in next year. Without them necessarily attending the event in person. And then what we're going to do at the event on Zoom is work with some of Dieter and Denise's and other youth workers, fantastic young people. And they can come and explore some of those issues in more of a conversational way with the elected members. So yours is actually going to be the first one of the new term of youth summit. So we're really looking forward to the 26th of January and making that a successful event for you all. Unless there's any questions Chair, that's the update I wanted to give.
Thank you Richard. Anybody any questions or comments to Richard? No? Oh sorry, Dieter.
Sorry, just to say thanks for Richard, all Richard's hard work and the team. It's a really good pack of materials and thank you to Dieter and Denise and their teams to roll it out with the young people so, and take on board a different way of doing things with their usual humour and resilience. So, so big thanks to the team Richard, if you could take that back, really appreciate it.
Thank you. And Dieter, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, for Richard, as we speak, we've got young people working on the activities and the questionnaires. So we'll be, as our building's not open yet. And we, we'll be taking these questionnaires out on our mobiles. We've got young people in the mobile as we speak, going through the questionnaires, filling them in. And I'll keep a stack of them and get them over to you at some stage.
Okay. Thank you. We done there? Thank you, that was an excellent report. The next one, we've got environment and community safety. We do actually have Heather Ashby. Heather, are you still with us?
I am Chair, I'm still here.
If Heather, if you'd like to give an update please. Heather's from the Lasbat team, antisocial behaviour. So if you'd like to give an update please.
Yeah, just on our side of things, our case officers are all still working at home. And are only carrying out visits when it's absolutely necessary to do so. So most things are over the phone and by email. And obviously everybody's been risk assessed and will be wearing PP when they need to. Just an update on the areas, we had a swap of area and some of the, went back over to Lasbat East outside. So they've taken the Temple Newsam Ward back from the south. And we still have the rest of it. We have Crossgates and Winmore, we've got a number of cases in that area. But everything's very positive and we're working well all together with yourself Chair and other partners in tackling antisocial behaviour on there. Kipax and Methley, we have cases and we're linking it with the hate crime coordinator and resolving issues. And in the Temple Newsam Ward, we've had an increase in cases, especially of the Halloween, Mischievous Night and Bonfire period. And there is a lot of multi-agency working going on there with housing, West Yorkshire Police, Travellers Services, Dieter's team and youth services. And there's an awful lot going on at the moment, but everybody's working hard and we've had some very positive feedback and we're hoping to get things to court that's been backlogged due to not being able to take any action due to Covid.
Okay, thank you Heather. Anybody any questions or comments to Heather? Councillor Gruen.
Thank you Chair, yes. I want to refer to a specific incident that Heather will be aware of in Winmore at the leisure, at the community centre where severe damage was done to the playing fields. And what we discovered is that the camera installed and monitored by Leeds Watch wasn't working. And what we also discovered is that ward members hadn't been informed that it wasn't working and we have no idea for how long it is and isn't working. And I wondered if the Lasbat team has any relationship with Leeds Watch and whether there's any accountability from Leeds Watch in terms of any service level agreements of how long and regularly these cameras, which are vital in terms of our security and which we pay for out of community committee funding. You know, how does all that work and how can we be reassured that everything is okay as it should be?
Thank you councillor. We do have a relationship with Leeds Watch, we're all under the safer Leeds umbrella. What I would say is that the comments were noted in our last meeting with regards to that camera and how long it had been out of action with regards to the service level agreements and how they're funded. I would be happy to answer each of your questions councillor Gruen. From above, I believe that you went to Mr Money with regards to the same and we have spoken to him about it. So with regards to Leeds Watch cameras, if I could answer you outside of the meeting and come back to you when I can give you the full answers.
That would be better Heather.
All right, no problem. Thank you councillor.
Are you okay with that councillor Gruen? Councillor Cooper, you claim is muted. Councillor Cooper.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I'm sorry, it seems that councillor Gruen seems to have frozen on the screen at the moment. But yeah, if I can just come in to try and assist here and I'm sure that that I was copied in to a response to councillor Gruen from officers actually on this very issue. So I would have thought he'd have had that. If he hasn't, I'm more than happy for him to contact me outside of the meeting and I'll discuss it with him.
Thank you councillor Cooper. Thank you, councillor Cooper. I've lost him altogether now. Councillor Gruin, are you still frozen? I can't see him. No. Okay then, any other comments or questions to Heather? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Chair.
And if you're wanting to go, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for taking it short notice. Okay, Bally?
Thank you, Chair. Turning on to page thirty four, the Employment and Skills and Welfare update. Champion's councillor Lennox.
We've read this, haven't we? This is a report we've all received, haven't we?
Page thirty four, Employment and Skills.
Is there anything that you've got to update on this councillor Lennox?
Just that there's been further discussion about the, there's a point on here saying that the council's employment and skills team are looking to sort of reboot and re-evaluate their offer as to what's available for people who are going to be, as we know, people are losing their jobs more and more as a result of this year. And looking at how, as well as sort of the key and basic skills that we offer as part of the employment and skills part of the council, looking at what can be, what maybe, whether it's online or what kind of connections and what kind of communications need to be put in place to help people who already have those skills get put straight in touch with where suitable vacancies are. So keeping the skills side of things and the upskilling that the council has always done to make sure that people are ready for work, but then also as we're going to find more and more people who we know are ready for work but have lost their jobs due to the pandemic, a way to connect them more directly and quickly with vacancies to try and, to try and keep, if possible, the numbers, the numbers of unemployed people in the city at a manageable level. So hopefully, maybe for next community committee, we could get someone from the department to come and discuss with us.
Well, and also, we do receive the updates on the vacancies that we can pass around to in the wards. So there is an opportunity to find out what vacancies there are for the unfortunate people who have lost their jobs. Okay, thank you. Bally?
Thank you, Chair. Turning to page thirty five, Health and Wellbeing. Covid nineteen testing within Leeds, there's a go-to page which provides details for all the testing opportunities available across the city.
Just to see councillor Gruin, did you want to comment on anything on here? Are you back with us?
I'm already just back now. I've had trouble with connecting, so I don't know where you are now.
You're on iPad three. We're on to yours, Health and Wellbeing and Adult Care, champion Peter Gruin.
Thank you very much.
Anything you'd like to add to the report?
I think the only thing I'd like to add really is there's a lot of discussion going on now about the healthy, the opportunities for health facilities in the northern, middle and southern quadrants, which either affects all of us in Crossgate and Winmore and on the periphery, also Temple Newsam colleagues. And it is really great to see that through the local care partnership, all the doctor surgeries in the area are trying to come together and at least be aware now of the scale of, of challenge for something like ten to fifteen thousand new patients over ten to fifteen years. But I'm confident that we've now set the baseline for those discussions.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a Covid update from Liz at the end of the meeting. Okay, Bally, come back to yourself now.
Thank you, Chair. It was about the Covid nineteen testing. Within Leeds, there's a go-to page which provides details for all the testing opportunities available across the city and the link is provided in the report. Turning over to page thirty six, the Stay Well This Winter Grants. Grants panel was held on the 17th of October in relation to this year's Stay Well This Winter Small Grants. Applicants have now been informed of the outcome of their applications and nineteen groups, agencies were successful in gaining funding for additional activities over the winter period. Moving on to page thirty eight, Garth in Swolington, housing.
Oh, it's page thirty seven actually. That's Holton, Moor and Swarcliff.
Helen Mallinson couldn't make the meeting. Would you like me to just go through this, Chair?
Well, I think, I think we can all see that, can't we? We've all got that in front of us. And we do have Pierce here from the other housing office. Pierce, would you like to give an update, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've, I'll come for housing as an overview, so you get an idea for both, both offices. So at the minute, all of our staff are working from home. We are getting out onto the estate as much as possible and in some cases, we do have members of staff working in offices on, on a small scale to support some of the essential functions like printing, sending out letters, et cetera. We've had this year to quite significantly change the way we work and adapt to that very quickly. The housing service is always very responsive and out on the estate. So to adapt to working from home, I think it's been a challenge but a massive success. And I think a big thank you is due to all the staff that have undertaken that change. At the minute, we are out doing work where approved tasks have been agreed with the unions and we've got risk assessments and method statements in place for that. But we're out doing viewings, estate inspections, we're picking up on external tenancy breaches and we are also picking up doorstep rent visits. It's not exclusive to those functions, but we're not crossing the threshold into properties on many occasions at the minute. In terms of income, we've noticed an increase in arrears. We're currently not escalating our arrears process. However, we are putting a big focus on supporting our tenants. We are utilising our in-house benefit advisor, our enhanced income officer. So they're maximising things like their DLA applications, personal independence payments, just to try and support people get as much money coming into the household to, to A, live and B, be able to continue paying the rent as well, resolve and things like universal credit and housing benefit issues. So we're on, we're trying to make sure everyone's got the right support to be able to do what they need to do financially. And I think in the report, there's some numbers on how successful that's been. In terms of our voids and lettings, we're still quite challenged at the minute in terms of the workload coming in. The choice-based letting scheme was suspended at the start of the first lockdown and was reintroduced slowly, I think it was around June time. I think the backlog's pretty much been addressed, but we've got a high number of properties still coming through. I think a lot of people, especially in our areas, have waited to move until now. So we're trying to manage that backlog and make sure that we're focusing on the ready-to-lets, making sure that we're allocating properties whilst they're in repair. So there's no delays on those properties being sat empty. Environmentally, the housing offices are going out on the estates, trying to pick up issues that might have been missed for the period of time where we've not been out as visible on the estates. We've started to pick back up on, say, messy gardens, fly tipping, overgrown sites. Anything that we can resolve, we are resolving still with the use of the environmental budget. One significant change that we've had is the annual home visit. So that would be us going into a property, checking the condition, checking the garden, who's living there. And as well, it's a perfect opportunity to pick up on safeguarding or support needs. With that being taken away, we've adapted to doing it by telephone. So we're currently doing annual telephone contacts. We're going through very similar questions and processes as we would on the visit. But at that, at the minute, we're having to adapt the way that we ask the questions. So for example, around safeguarding, if you're doing the visit, you very much, it's clear if that person is in a position to talk. We're over the phone, you might not know. So we've developed processes where we can ask a series of questions to ascertain whether the, that is in a safe position to talk to us so that we can pick up on essential vulnerabilities or if they're a victim to things like domestic violence. So that's, that's where we're at at the minute. Both offices are underway completing those. I think we're at about the twenty five percent of those completed. And there are some of those that have been identified as needing an actual visit when that comes appropriate for us to take on that task. And those are where we've got, say, high number of repairs or known vulnerabilities where it's really important that we get in, speak to that person, where the telephone contact might not necessarily, necessarily work for them. So that's, that's an overview of what has changed with the housing service. And there's some key information around performance in the report. I'm happy to go through elements of that if there's time, Chair, but hopefully that information's useful and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Notice councillor Field, you had your hand up.
I'm not, sorry Chair, no, it was just a clap for Pierce and his team.
Oh, thank you very much, councillor Field. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad about that. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions or comments to Pierce? No? Well, I'd just like to say unfortunately Helen Mallinson's not here, but the Swarcliff Housing Office, they have really delivered. And I must speak to Helen several times a day, every day, because the casework has just gone over there. I'm sure for everybody in every ward, but they're and the teams are delivering where they can. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure it's passed back. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Okay then, I think now shall we bring Jo in, Bally? On the Good Neighbours scheme.
Yes, thank you, Chair, that's fine.
Okay, Jo, unfortunately Ken Hill from Swarcliff Good Neighbours is not able to with us this evening, but Jo's here and I must say that was an excellent AGM this afternoon. So if you'd like to give us an update, the floor is yours. And obviously, you're our hub in the Crossgate and Winmore area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Graham. Yeah, so just a little overview for any of you that don't know who we are. So we're one of the neighbourhood networks in Leeds and we work with all the people in the Crossgate and surrounding areas. We've got just under twelve hundred members. There's approximately about four hundred and fifty members in the Temple Newsam Ward, four hundred and fifty or sixty in the Crossgate and Winmore Ward and the remainder are in the Cullumbback and Seacraft Ward or a few that are just out of area. We obviously work to reduce loneliness and isolation and support independence. Obviously, things are very different at the moment and quite challenging for us. We did become, in March, we became the lead for the Crossgate and Winmore Community Hub. And since lockdown began, we've coordinated hub volunteers via telephone calls and in person to help us to collect over three hundred prescriptions. We've delivered over nine hundred free food hampers. We continue to collect people's click-and-collect shops. We've provided shops using the shopping voucher and paid-for scheme. We've organised volunteers to walk dogs on a regular basis. We've supported our programme of daily virtual online groups. And that leads on to, we're also the first digital health hub in Leeds and we've just secured funding for that to continue for another year, which is fantastic. We've now got ten percent of our members trained on Zoom, which is absolutely amazing. There's about over seven, I think there's seventy-nine being trained since the pandemic, which is great. So we've got coffee mornings, board and busters, book clubs, history talks. There's, there's an array of different things going on to suit everybody. And that's going to continue. All of our members have been called at least three times, which is fantastic. We've distributed over thirteen hundred and fifty Shine magazines for Leeds older people's forums and posted our newsletter in record time. Thank you to the hub volunteers for that because it was great that we had access to them. Because we do have one hundred and nineteen volunteers, but obviously, a lot of our volunteers are elderly, so they were shielding and staying indoors throughout this. So the, the hub meant that we had access to this pool of volunteers to support us. And that's, I think we managed to post our newsletter in about four days, all hand-posted, so that were absolutely fantastic. Obviously, Christmas is very different for us this year. So as councillor Graham said, we had our first online virtual AGM today that went really well. What we're doing for Christmas is we are, we've got forty-two volunteers that are providing weekly telephone befriending to over three hundred of our members each week. We are going to be giving every single member a Christmas present. So we're up to about eight hundred bought so far and wrapped. We've still got a few more to get. We're going to provide a next, a Christmas lunch on the twenty-third of December to seventy of our members. We're also working in partnership with St Vincent's on Christmas Day to deliver Christmas lunch to, to those that are most isolated and vulnerable, that we know that don't have anybody else. When, we'll be utilising the hub volunteers to deliver our annual report calendar that has just gone to print, so we're just waiting for this to come through, which is, everybody finds is very useful. So that's going to be going out over the next two weeks, including the Shine magazine and every single member will get a present. The week commencing the twenty-first of December, right up to Christmas Eve, we've got staff dressed, one as the driver of Santa and the rest of staff dressed as elves going out to the local, we're going up to Temple Newsam, we're going to the Lower West Kennelays. There's a route that we've got within our Christmas card that's going to be delivered before so that people can look out for us. And we're going to ensure that every single member gets a small present from us, which is absolutely fantastic. And Jo, things are really busy, but the response and the feedback that we're getting back from everywhere is amazing. But I just wanted to say a personal thank you as well for all the support and the funding that we've received from the councillors, that without that, this wouldn't have been possible. So thank you ever so much. And if anyone's got any questions, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jo. And I'd just like to say again, and there's other teams in the Temple Newsam Ward as well. This has been going on since it began. It's not just started now. Because suddenly we're getting ones popping up, this has been going on for the full, from March, from when it first started. Doing excellent work. I've got councillor Cooper and councillor Hayden.
Yeah, thanks for allowing me to come in, Chair. And I just want to, to just say to Jo that, you know, you're doing fantastic work as a neighbourhood network. And I know that in, in the whole of the Outer East, there are a number of other neighbourhood networks as well. And they have been absolute lifelines to people who've been isolated and on their own during this terrible times of a pandemic and especially elderly people who have been more isolated than ever I've known as, as well in the past. And without the work that you've done in, in, through your neighbourhood network that really does cover the majority of our ward for those members as well. I know that that's been a lifeline, but I, I just want to give a shout out to all the neighbourhood networks, for all the volunteers. I know you only have a few paid members of staff and they are all volunteers that go out there, you know, day in, day out, ensuring that people still have that contact that's very much needed. And I'm, you know, as I've said, a lifeline that we need to be very grateful for this year. So thanks, Jo. And please take that back to all, all the team and all the volunteers, please, for all the wonderful work that you're doing. And I'm sure there'll be many twitching at the curtains waiting for Santa to arrive with that present.
They will.
Thank you.
Councillor Hayden?
Thank you. I just want to ask if we could see the route?
Yeah, I can get a copy of the Christmas card.
Oh, lovely. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councillor Sharp, would you want to come in? I'll stick your hand.
Sorry, Chair, sorry Chair, I keep freezing. Just to echo what councillor Cooper said, it's absolutely fantastic and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. No, it's, they are well known and today I was called from the staff of the Barbo Public House who are there, who normally at this time, they give five pounds each and have the secret Christmas, Father Christmas. So obviously, they won't be doing that. So they're going to put it together and buy supplies for the Crossgate Good Neighbours. So there's a lot of support because of the name. So we'll be coming. And it was potatoes last time, wasn't it? So everybody, every one of them, they're all really, we don't know where we'd be without these neighbourhood networks. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? No? Thank you, Jo. I know I'm moving around. Bally, we're in youth service now.
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Page thirty-eight, Youth Services for Dieter.
Dieter, you going to come in?
Excuse me. Yeah, as it says in my report, both Denise and I have been, had our teams out working. Again, we've had lockdown tier three. We've had some young people who've been isolating. We've done a lot of welfare checks and carry on our engagement with young people. We've done our Christmas activity bags for both wards. And we're just getting on with it really. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to have much of a summer. We're hoping that February might be a little bit more promising in terms, terms of trip. Young people, again, because of tier three and the lockdown, we weren't able to open our mobiles. We've been given the all-clear to open our mobiles now. But we've just been getting on with things. But we've just been getting on with things. Working with young people on their mental health and wellbeing, signposting any parents to Marketplace, Teen Connect. Because some parents have had concerns regarding their children. We've also re, children, young people, we've also reassured them that the new rules at schools are there for their safety, their family's safety. Because a lot of young people were finding it hard to be in the same classroom every day. With teachers coming in to deliver different subjects. But they seem to have settled down now. We've offered young people, some young people have been struggling with subjects. So myself and Chelsea have been engaging with young people who are struggling, helping them with maths and English, doing some online lessons with them. Just to bring them up to scratch. We've been supporting some parents who've been finding it difficult to have children at home throughout the lockdown. But hopefully, fingers crossed, there might be a light at the end of the tunnel after Christmas. So we're looking at maybe booking some trips and just trying to get things back to normal. At the moment, we can only have four on a minibus, so that's been a bit of a barrier. Plus some places have opened and then shut down. So rather than waste any money, we're just going to hope that February, summer and October. We'll be able to put everything back in place and have our youth clubs and, and have our mobiles operating to have young people on in Temple Newsam Ward. And get the Swaklawn Community Centre open so we can get young people back in the building as well. We've also been delivering sexual health hacks to older young people. Who are C Card registered, directing them to the sexual health websites for any further information. Clinics that may be open over Christmas in order to access their services for condoms, pregnancy tests, STI tests, et cetera. So yeah, we're busy every day. But we love it. We just want to be able to get all the young people back into the provisions. And work with them like we have previously. We've also lost a member of staff. So at the moment, we're just a three team. The council are not putting it out to add. So we're working as a three team. We've got, as I've said in my report, three of our, one of our workers and two of our volunteers who work across both wards. Have passed their MVP level three, so they're all now qualified youth workers. They worked very hard throughout the year and they've done a great job. So they've all been informed that they've passed and we're very proud of them.
Okay. Thank you Dieter for that excellent update. And I've seen you wrapping some lovely bags up to give out. So we're all very pleased. And again, you've been doing that from the word go. And I'll just commit, unfortunately Jean Barnbrook couldn't be with us this evening for the tribe. And she, again, that group, they've done excellent, just like yourselves with all what they've done for the community. Not just the young ones, the older people as well. So we're really lucky with who we've got across the ward. Councillor Cooper? Are you waving or is it?
Sorry, I was just trying to put a reaction of a clap on my screen to thank.
You're confusing those hands. Anybody like to make any comments to Dieter? No? Okay. I'm just a bit, well, I'm confused with all these Zooms. Councillor Field, I've got councillor Sarah Field on a box and then I've got Sarah Field. Is that, are they both you?
Um, there's, there's all, there's all it would have been Chair, but I don't know what, what that other one is. I'm sure I've done something wrong along the way, but I'm, I'm apologised.
No, it's okay. I just want it, it's black. But no, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, anybody? Any? No? Well, Dieter, keep up the good work and take care. Dieter?
Sorry, sorry. Can I come in Chair? And I, I, I mean, I know I chat thank Dieter earlier on when we're doing my young persons report. But just a huge thank you for all, for the whole year really, about, for her and the team. And, and just really challenging circumstances, really challenging circumstances. So, yeah, and, and losing a member of staff. But the way they're bringing on new members of staff as well, you know, and giving people those life opportunities and getting them trained up. And just adapting. And like I said earlier, you just tackle, tackle it with your, your good fun and sense of humour and resilience. And I know that the young people adore you all and, you know, it's, and get such a lot from you. And yeah, as I was reading in the report, that main question of when are we going to be open again? You know, they're desperate to come, aren't they? And desperate to be with their friends and do, go on trips. And, and, and big shout out to all the young people for their resilience this year. Because they've had such a lot to put up with and in and out of schools and, you know, worried about their exams and their futures. And, you know, can you pass on a very happy Christmas to?
Most definitely.
Some of them from a socially distanced kind of aspect. But just from all of us that I hope they have a lovely Christmas and well done for this year. And, you know, we're really proud of them.
Thank you. And, and from Denise as well.
Absolutely Denise as well. It's in the same, yeah, absolutely.
Okay then, thank you for that. That was a good report. Bali?
Turning to page 39.
Can I just come in with my part for the youth service? Sorry.
I was just going to introduce you Denise. I was just going to actually mention that to Chair.
I'm going to say what you're saying Denise. Right. So Denise, please, would you like to give your update? Sorry about that.
It's all right. I'll, I'll be quick because I have to leave at 5.30 because I've got a youth club at six. But yeah, I mean, it is in my report, but just that we've had a lot of issues with antisocial behaviour in my two wards. Predominantly in Garthas Main Street, Barley Hill Park, Gleeblons. And a small amount in Kipex behind the Co-op. So we've just been trying to get teams out. And like Dieter says, we're only a team of three and one of my staff is currently off shielding. So there is only myself and Mel that are trying to cover both wards. So yeah, we were out bonfire night, we were out Halloween. And we did some small trips in October, half term. We just managed to go to Go Ape at Temple Newsam. Just because we can't have many young people on the minibus. And so yeah, we're still out every night, still doing detached in the cold and rain. But the young people are still out there in the weather, so we will be. And just working in partnership with the police really, with the antisocial behaviour. Councillor, Police Officer Johnson, we've been doing quite a lot of work with him in Micklefield, Kipex and mainly Garthas. And just really that our Christmas bags, everything's been delivered. We'll be bagging them up on Friday. So in my two wards, they'll be getting a £6 White Rose voucher. So they can spend it in any shop in the White Rose Centre pending stuff staying open. I've got friends that work in Topshop, bless them. They'll get two Christmas cards that they can colour in themselves. They'll be getting a sequin decoration to put on the tree so they can make it themselves. And they're getting a Christmas selection chocolate box and a ceramic tea light that they can decorate themselves. So we spent the full £10 on them. So we'll, I'll be in contact with all the councillors next week. If they want to come out and meet one or two of the young people and, and hand over a, a bag. And we'll take some pictures for social media. So our lot will be getting that next week. So but apart from that, just plodding along really and still working every evening. Thank you.
Any comments or questions to Denise?
Just to say a big thanks to Denise, you know, as children's.
Doing excellent work there Denise. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll pass that on to, well, me and Mel, I'll pass it on to us.
To all the young people that, you know, they're very much in our thoughts and we're very proud of them. Yeah.
We'll do.
Let me just send hers as well. I'm just seeing it come up there then. Okay then.
Thank you councillors.
Bali?
Thank you Chair. Turning to page 40.16. The Community Engagement Social Media, Appendix One. This provides information on posts and details recent social media activity for the Outer East Community Committee Facebook page and the Coronavirus Ward pages. Outer East still remains the first most popular community committee page. This meeting today, the Outer East Community Committee meeting, that's been broadcasted publicly on the council's YouTube channel. Will also be shared on Facebook and the mailing list to engage more views. Thank you Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anybody? Any comments or questions to Bali regarding the report? No? So I think we'd be on any other business then. So we've got Liz. Liz is going to give an update on the Covid. We had, is councillor Gruen still with us? I can't see him anywhere.
He lost his connection again Chair and he did send an email to apologise that he keeps dropping out.
Okay, thank you. Won't make any more comments on that one. We'll get back. When it came to the figures for the Crossgates and Winmore Ward, I certainly wasn't happy with them. Neither my colleagues regarding the Covid things which we went into. And then we've had a further update. So Liz, would you like to just under way the council and the figures please, or whatever is it you're going to say? Thank you.
Ashal, yes councillor. So evening everybody. I'm Liz Darmian, Head of Stronger Communities. So just in terms of, of giving you a brief update on some of the work we've been doing, very much led by local ward members. So in response to some concerns that ward members brought, brought to our attention in the communities team. About high infection and transmission rates in some of our communities. We've been developing local engagement plans across those areas that have, have high infection rates. And I'm very much about looking how we can put local ward members at the heart of, of getting some of those important messages out. And to make sure that people are observing national guidance and keeping one another and, and of course their neighbourhood safe. So we've developed a number of local engagement plans all using a similar framework. And they essentially look at four different areas of work. So one is around places, so the places where people from a local ward perspective will come together to meet. Or declare or to, to, to go about their business, such as on high streets and in businesses. The second work stream is around organisations and groups. So those groups that we can link into through their networks to make sure that we're getting messages out for the particular groups where we, where we have some concerns about increased infection rates. So that might be about getting messages out to young people to make sure that they're, they're playing their part around keeping communities safe. Or it might be about messages to older people because we've got some concerns around infection rates being higher or more prevalent in, into some of our older age ranges. And the next work stream is around services and infrastructure. So understanding what networks are already in place across your wards and how we can get messages out using things like GP, GP patient lists and things like that. But again, very much about putting elected members at the heart of, of the work that we do at a ward level. And making sure that they're very much at the front end in terms of getting those messages out effectively to local people. And then the final work stream is around social media and other forms of media that we can use to try and get those messages out. So we've, we've developed about six of these work programmes now, local engagement plans across, across the city. And I am really pleased to say that we are, we have seen in particular these last few weeks, some dramatic reductions in, in the infection rates in some of our areas. And the reason I think that councillor Graham was really keen to bring this initiative to our attention is that this was very much led from the Outer East Community Committee. And the members that, that are engaged around that committee. So it's, it's very much been about getting the right messages out, about those messages being much more tailored to the local, to the local, local issues. And I'm making sure that those messages are getting across in the right way. So that people play their part, keep our communities safe. And that's it. I don't, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Anybody? Any comments or councillor Cooper?
Yeah, thank you Chair. And it's a shame we've lost our health champion at this point. Because I'm sure he'd, he'd want to come in and comment on all the good work that's been going on in the Outer East. Around dealing with the various infection rates in different wards in the Outer East, I've got to say. So, so it's a shame he's not here to give us an update on that. But perhaps he can forward that by email if he'd, if he'd be prepared to give us a briefing on the work that's been undertaken on that one.
I will skip to, don't worry.
Thank you Chair. And I, and I just wanted to, to thank the communities team actually for the work that those have been doing. In, I know that I'm responsible for the community section on the executive board. But actually as a ward member, I really wanted to thank them for what they've done in Temple Newsam. They brought about, very quickly, a partnership meeting of everybody that needed to be there to brief us as, as ward members. And ask for our views and input as to what we thought would be the best way of trying to raise awareness about infection of coronavirus. And how to act and behave when you're out and about and with the various members of vulnerable members of your family. So, you know, without them actually doing that, we wouldn't have been able to achieve the reduction in infection rates that we have in our ward and wider in our East, I dare say. By some of the nodding heads that I'm seeing. So please Liz, will you pass on our thanks again for that sterling work that's really making a difference, you know, to those infection rates. And I dare say saving lives. So thank you.
No problem. I'll feed that into the team. Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? No? Well, I think that's been really interesting. Has anybody else, any other business they'd like to raise? No? Councillor Lewis, you just lit up then? If you.
I light up my life every day, Pauline.
I'm sure we'll all be bonkers with all these Zoom meetings, honestly, I really do.
Sorry Chair, I didn't realise I've switched my video off. I've been sat here.
No.
I've been sat here, but I didn't realise I'd flicked my video off. But yes, I've lit myself up now.
Okay then. Right. So thank you everybody for attending. And thank you for all the work our offices are doing and our different teams. And if we don't see each other again by Zoom, we'll do in, have a happy Christmas and New Year. Okay then. So thank you. Andy, anything you want to say? Andy? You're muted. Bali, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Thank you members. Lovely to see you all. Have a lovely Christmas and New Year.
Sorry about that Chair. Yeah, just to remind members, the next formal meeting of the community committee is on Tuesday 9th of March 2021. Usual start time.
Okay then. Thank you everybody. I'm going before.